Piper's good. Love is good. Are you held to attend that meeting with me in uh Genesee Health Friday morning? He was at two o'clock. Uh, I need someone to say the good of your health is you are serving this meeting?
His chemo is Friday.
Oh wow.
Normally I take it. I have been a couple of days. I might. I can check and see.
Okay.
I think I looked at it and saw it was Friday. Having had you with your. I'll check it and let you know.
Okay. I would like to call this Genesee County Board of Commissioners meeting to order at this time. Good evening to all of you all. Thank you for being in the room tonight. At this time, we have the roll call by our clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Present.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Here.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Present.
Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Avery.
Here.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Present.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Here.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Here.
And Commissioner Fluehling.
Present.
Thank you. Uh, after I deliver the invocation tonight, we'll have our pledge allegiance by Commissioner Kuzno. Uh, let us bow for a prayer. Gracious God, we thank you again for gifting to us today, a gift that no other competitor can provide, and that's the gift and enjoyment of another day. We thank you for how you have brought us back into this room and how you have chosen each and every one of us to serve the people of this community. I ask now that you will be amongst us tonight as we conduct the business of Genesee County and that our will will align with your will, that the people of Genesee County will be better served, that they will be cared for, that they will be considered, and that they will be blessed. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As first order of business tonight, we have the approval of the meeting from our August twentieth, twenty twenty-five meeting. It's been moved by Commissioner Kuzno, I believe. Wayhill. Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now, uh, we have come to our public speaking portion of our meeting. Those that are the... Oh, excuse me. So, we are not at public speaking. Tonight, we need to handle one of the most important pieces of business that we handle throughout the year, and that is our proposed fiscal year budget. So before us, we have the public hearing on the budget. Two five six one one, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Crystal Simpson, our CFO, to come forward. After that, we'll open the floor for those who wish to address us regarding our twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. Crystal.
Sure. Uh, so with me this evening, I have a copy of our adopted budget book, um, which is on the agenda for you to approve tonight. Uh, there was only three changes from what was presented at the last meeting. Um, an item was in here for a grant that will not be spent in twenty-five that needed to be added to twenty-six. Uh, the senior services budget was increased for that, um, increased discussed last meeting. Um, and then one general fund change that was requested by the board office. Uh, general fund is still at a zero net, uh, use of fund balance, but those are the only changes. I don't know, Brian, what has to happen for the public hearing piece? I'm not sure.
Before we go to the public hearing piece, if I may, is there any discussion or comments amongst or questions from, uh, the Board of Commissioners?
May I?
Commissioner Wayhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Crystal. All of the, so this budget includes, um, the pay increases for any contracts that we settled over the past seven, eight, nine months.
Yes.
What it doesn't include, I think, well, it doesn't, it also includes, as I understand it, um, an increase for other folks who we've not yet voted on. Is that right? So, non-union employees, co-electeds, and, um, department directors. Is that right?
Yes, we did include, um, for all of those, and then the one contract that has not been settled yet, we included an increase similar to what was offered to the other unions.
Okay. So that we could be prepared to pay it, assuming that we settle the contract. Um, so there, I think there's considerable confusion with the folks that haven't gotten a raise that are non-union and the co-electeds and department heads. And I, I just wanted to point out, uh, in front of the public and, and people that are hoping to get some sort of a, an increase at some point, that we were gonna, we are going to address this at a future meeting. Not, and I don't think it's gonna be brought up tonight, but, um, uh, I just wanted to make sure that's clear to folks. It's, so it's on our agenda, not tonight, but it will be shortly.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, thank you so much, Mrs. Simpson. Um, at this time, we will, uh, I will open the floor. Our public hearing will begin if there are individuals who desire to address the Board of Commissioners regarding, uh, solely the proposed fiscal year budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. Uh, this is your opportunity to come forward. You'll have two minutes, uh, to address this body. I want you to hear, uh, the sound of the beep, uh, then, uh, I'll ask that you please summarize and conclude at that time. Uh, anyone wishing to address this body for this public hearing? Anyone address, wishing to address this body for this public hearing? Seeing no one who is interested in addressing this body for this public hearing, this public hearing is now closed. Now that brings us to our public, uh, address. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address this body on any general county business or anything else, feel free to, uh, come forward at this time. Before you begin, if there are others, if you would, uh, line up to my left, your right, that would be great. Anyone wishing to speak, please line up to my left. Uh, that's, that's a good spot right there. And, um, please state your name and your city township or village or residency. For the record, uh, you're one of our co-electeds, so proceed. Mr. Layton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. Commissioner David Layton, I'm the county prosecuting attorney. I just wanted to give you a quick update on happenings at the prosecutor's office. Uh, since I last updated you, we have had nine jury trials this summer in front of five different circuit court judges, some of whom are here tonight, I noticed. Uh, we, in front of Judge Lachana, in June, convicted a man of second degree murder. The gang-related crime occurred at the Red Roof Inn in Mount Morris Township. Also in June, in front of Judge Hannibal, we convicted a man of killing his girlfriend in front of his three-year-old, her three-year-old child. He was convicted of second degree murder and sentenced to twenty-five to fifty years in prison, plus two years for felony firearm. In front of Judge Newblad in July, we convicted two men of first degree murder in a property dispute in Thedford Township that led to a murder. In July, in front of Judge Lachana, we convicted a man of criminal sexual conduct in the first degree in Grand Blank Township. It was a delayed disco, disclosure where the abuse occurred over a six-year period, starting when the victim was about three years old. The defendant was the fifty-two-year-old stepfather. And we also convicted a man of gra, uh, great bodily harm, uh, plus torture and unlawful imprisonment and gun counts, uh, for shooting a girlfriend inside of a van. Uh, next week, we have two trials going, one in front of Judge Hannibal on a murder and arson, and one in front, in front of visiting Judge Ball, uh, on an aggravated stalking. Finally, I just wanted to say that the man who had broken into multiple homes in the Thedford Township area has been arrested and charged with thirty-five felony counts. Michigan State Police used old-fashioned detective work, including taking footprint impressions, uh, to convict, to, to, uh, give us the evidence that we needed. But we've all, we also used in that case, some of the most up-to-date technology available to law enforcement, including video surveillance from local stores and gas stations, uh, facial recognition software, and the use of vehicle tracking technology, which we obtained through a court-ordered subpoena that had been authorized by my office. So, it was a busy summer. I anticipate a busy fall. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Dr. Angela Reeves, and I'm here about the Genesee Health Systems Board appointments. So I'd like to first acknowledge Commissioner Winfrey, and then Commissioner Getzinger, Commissioner Avery, and of course Commissioner Lloyd, as well as Commissioner Shoemaker, Commissioner Kuzno, Commissioner Wayhill, and my own Commissioner Fluehling. I'm in District Nine, Commissioner Fluehling's district, and I appreciate all of the service you have consistently provided to our community. So, I just want to say a couple of things. It won't be long. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I come to you with significant administrative experience, with, uh, uh, experience as a licensed professional counselor, as a therapist, and one who has served forty-three years at Mott Community College and twelve years on the Genesee Health Systems Board. I'm asking for your support to, um, approve my reappointment. I have been the chair of the, uh, Finance Committee since two thousand twenty-one, and as I said, I am the Secretary Treasurer of the Board. I appreciate any support you can give to me. I think this is very important work, and I sincerely desire to continue doing it. If you have any questions, you can certainly reach me. Thank you for this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speakers.
Good evening. Um, my name is Dawn Weir. I'm one of your court judges. I'm assigned to the Family Division, and I currently preside over the Family Drug Court. Um, one of the agenda items this evening, obviously, is the request by the Specialty Court Program for allocation of funds from the opioid fund, um, that has been granted to the County of Genesee. The specialty courts are asking for a little over a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars from that fund. I just wanted to be clear to everybody in the room, anybody listening, that that's not any cost to any of us taxpayers. That money came as a, from the opioid fund. Nobody in this room had to put any money into it, nor will they have to. So, one of the delineated items that is an appropriate use for that money is for the specialty courts. So, I'm gonna ask for some grace for my two minutes. I am, because it's gonna take me a little longer than two minutes. So I respectfully ask for some grace on that. And my colleagues are also here with me to talk about their specialty courts. So I oversee the Family Drug Court. What is that? That is for parents that come into the neglect and abuse system. I just want you to know how important these programs are. These folks come in front of me because they have substance use issues that are impairing their ability to properly parent. These are not inherently bad people. These are people with an issue that need help. So when they come into the Drug Court Program for their cases, they are provided with all of these services and support that help them get healthy. Someone, if you were to ask me, what is the reason? What does the Family Drug Court do? It saves lives. It saves families. It reunites families. I can't think of much more important things in life than lives and family. I get to watch these people come into my court every other week, and they, we do reviews with them, and we hear from their caseworkers and, uh, the people that work through the Drug Court Program with them, and we hear from therapists. They have such an awesome support system to help them through this difficult time. But at the end of the day, if somebody successfully completes this program and they're reunited with their children, and we have graduations from them, and you're gonna hear from Judge Lachana, and you're gonna hear from Judge Hannibal as well. We have a graduation day for them. It's a celebration. They can bring friends. They can bring family. I've seen caseworker bring these parents flowers because they've become that close with these people, and they've tried to help these people. But as somebody who was elected by the members, the citizens of this county, to help people and to serve people, there is no greater joy than watching a parent graduate from that program. And I ask them, what would you like to say to the other people that are here? The participants, the people that have just started, and they're going down that rocky road, and they're going down the road that you walked? This program saved my life. I'll say it again. This program saved my life. And when I have children that are standing next to their mom or their dad crying, I'm so proud of my mom. I'm so proud of my dad. And they get to go home with those parents. And those parents now have skills and support that will allow them to be the best parents they can be and be the most productive members of society that they can be. Hundred and forty-three thousand dollars of non-taxpayer money is not a lot to ask for to help out in that regard. You guys elected me because you want me to help people? Help me help those people. I'm asking that you grant the request and allow us the money so we can continue to take care of citizens of Genesee County. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark Lachana. I'm one of your other circuit court judges assigned to the, uh, Civil Criminal Division, and I, uh, am here to reiterate my support for this resolution, two thousand twenty-five, twenty ninety-two, with regard to the funds Judge Weir was just talking about in a much more eloquent way than I ever could. And I ask you to support this resolution because, uh, it's specifically the recovery court that I'm privileged to preside over has existed for over twenty years. Graduated over a thousand people with an extremely low rate of recidivism ahead of the statewide average, and we do it all at a fraction of the cost of incarcerating somebody. Something on the order of about ten percent of what it costs to incarcerate somebody is what it costs to go through our program for two years. And we've done it for over twenty years without one single dollar from the county. Not one. It's all been grant-funded up to this point. And we're here now asking for this appropriation from non-taxpayer funds, as Judge Weir pointed out, because of a cut in federal funding. And, uh, it was discussed quite a bit at the meeting last week with regard to the length of the request, and I think it's an appropriate one to limit it to one year so we can find other sources of funding for this program. But we need this, these funds this year to administer to the residents of Genesee County. If we don't get these funds, our programs will shrink. They will be less effective, and the citizens of this county will suffer. So I ask you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Cory Hannibal. I'm also a circuit court judge currently in the Civil Criminal Division. I oversee the Veterans Court. Uh, I am a relative rookie to the Specialty Treatment Court, but I'm here to ask for your, uh, support in the allocation to fund, and by fund, I mean keep afloat, the, uh, Specialty Treatment Courts. Keep in mind, we are without a colleague today, Judge Christiansen. Uh, there are four specialty courts and a department that needs to, uh, run those. So that one hundred and forty-three thousand is divided over five departments essentially, to keep them afloat. Nothing new, nothing heightened, but we're facing cuts, and we need that money. The Veterans Court, I think, is, well, let me, let me put it this way. We take young people, people of appropriate age, and we teach them how to kill. We ask them, if necessary, to die. We don't, we don't do so well at teaching them how to live with what they've done. That often leads to mental, physical scars that turn into substance abuse. This allocation certainly falls within the spirit of the use of opioid funds to help treat. For every person, for every veteran, man or woman who was in that program, that's a person who is not using. Many of them, most of them are employed. More importantly, they are not in jail, and they are not dead from substance abuse or the life that, that is associated with that, that substance abuse. It costs truly a fraction, and the recidivism rate for those who graduate from the Veterans Court, I believe, is less than ten percent, as of twenty twenty-four figures. So we provide the tools for lasting sobriety. If that's not within the spirit of this, this allocation, I don't know what is. And I'll ask that you find the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right. Good morning, um, Genesee County Board of Commissioners. Um, once again, just reintroducing myself. My name is Brooke Gao. I'm the Executive Director of the Family Service Agency at Michigan, located right here in Flint, but we service all of Genesee County. And I once again come before you today as a recipient and a provider of senior millage ser. I wish to stand here celebrating the growth and stability of our programs, but instead, I stand here with heavy. My nonprofit, like many others, is struggling to make ends. We are facing not only reductions from the senior millage budget, but also federal cuts that compound that burden. Every dollar taken away translates to fewer rides, fewer meals, fewer hours of support, all very real impacts on seniors who depend on us. And that's why I stand before you all one last time to urge this board to reconsider its recent decision to potentially move forward with a five percent flat increase across all senior centers prior to any investigation or review. I ask you to all please reconsider just waiting to make any decision until the Senior Millage Task Force can properly investigate allocations. To approve such an increase without examining how dollars are allocated, especially when concerning percentages are directed towards administrative costs, feels like a dismissal of the struggles that frontline providers are facing every single day. For those of us working tirelessly to serve, this decision feels like a slap in the face, and we are not asking for luxuries. We are asking for fairness, for thoughtful consideration, and for a process that ensures that the dollars entrusted to you are spent the way that they matter most, directly improving the lives of seniors in Genesee. Thank you, everyone, for hearing me out week after week, and I hope you're not sick of me. And I ask that you please reflect carefully on the impact of this choice, not just on the agencies, but the hundreds of thousands of seniors waiting for the services that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additional members of the public who wish to address this body?
Good evening. Dominique Clemens, Genesee County Clerk and Register of Deeds, Flint Township. I just wanted to provide a couple of quick updates. First and primarily, I wanted to give a thank you to, I think, some folks that often don't get thanks. And that's specifically Ray Zanki and Mike DeWesha and their teams. Uh, we've, as you all know, we are in this wonderful new building. Um, and it's not been without challenges, and there's still work being done. But our IT department and our facilities and operations team have gone so far above and beyond to get us to where the point that we're at now, continuing to make improvements. Um, and I think a lot of times, we don't recognize those folks at the ground level doing that work. So I wanted to first acknowledge that. Uh, secondly, just as far as office updates, wanted to provide two quick updates. One, uh, that we do have an election coming up this November, a small election. We are a little bit ahead of schedule, and those ballots have been sent to print, um, and will be available in plenty of time for the required deadline for mail-in ballots to be sent out. Um, on the deeds side, and a little bit of personal news, uh, this weekend, I will be attending the Michigan State Register of Deeds Association, MARD, uh, where I will be accepting the nomination as District Chair of the District for the Register of Deeds Association, uh, that is primarily the thumb in southeast Michigan. Uh, this district represents two-thirds of all property transactions in the state of Michigan. Um, and as District Chair, I'll be working to set standards for all of the counties in the way that we accept property records and best practices. Uh, finally, one of the things that I wanted to close with, um, it hasn't been mentioned yet today, um, but I know a lot of folks have seen, there's been a lot of things happening. Um, and just touching on the nature of political discourse. As a reminder to all of you, to the residents of Genesee County, that here in Genesee County and anywhere across the country, uh, as Americans, we should all be able to share our political beliefs, have political discourse, and the result of that should not be, uh, your life. Uh, this, today, Charlie Kirk was shot and killed at a political event for simply having an opinion. Uh, regardless of what side of the aisle we stand on and what opinion we're on, uh, we need to, as a society, take a deep breath, that we need to be able to have conversations with each other of a political nature, uh, take care of each other, and restore humanity. Uh, Mr. Kirk was, is the exact same age that I was. Um, and I know, you all know that I'm very outspoken in my, uh, politics, and it could very much have been me or any other elected official advocate that this has happened to. Um, so regardless of what side of the aisle you're on, I just ask that you all keep the family of those affected uh, in your, in your thoughts and your prayers, um, but also consider the way that we lead and that we govern, and that we do so in a way with compassion and with dignity, and we're encouraging everyone to recognize each other for the humanity that is in with all of us. Thank you.
Clerk Clemens, can you give us the name again of the gentleman that, uh, perished?
Charlie Kirk. Charlie Kirk. He is a activist, a leader of Turning Point USA, a conservative organization. He was at a, uh, college event at the University of Utah today, uh, where during that event, he was shot.
Before you take your seat, can we observe a moment of silence, uh, in memory of, uh, this gentleman? Thank you. Prayers for his family and those impacted by, um, this senseless violence. Any additional members of the public that wish to address this body? Any additional members of the public that wish to, um, speak at this time? Seeing no additional members of the public who wish to address this body, public speaking is now closed. Next on our agenda, uh, that brings us to our communications, two five six oh six Arts Millage presentation. Thank you so much for being here tonight. If you give us your name, your, uh, role, responsibility, title, and, uh, the floor is yours.
I certainly will. Thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate your time this evening, and thanks for welcoming us to come present on the Genesee County Arts Education and Cultural Enrichment Millage. I'm Todd Sluscher. I'm the CEO and Executive Director of Sloan Museum of Discovery and Longway Planetarium. Pleased to be here this evening. I'm also here with some of my colleagues, Tracy, who are in the audience here. Tracy Glad, who is the Executive Director of the Flint Institute of Arts Museum and Art School, also known as the FIA. Uh, Latoya English is here from the Fund Development Director at the Burston Field House. Rodney Lontain, who is the President and CEO of the Flint Institute of Music, also known as FIM. Greg Fiedler, the President and CEO of the Greater Flint Arts Council, and Mark Sinella, who is the CEO of the Flint Cultural Center Corporation. Uh, we're gonna keep our presentation brief tonight. I want to respect your time, and we are happy to answer questions. But if you do have follow-up questions after this meeting, please direct them to Mark Sinella, and he can route them to the correct institution who can get you the right answer. So we're gonna share a couple of updates on where the millage has been and where we're going next. Uh, in two thousand twenty-three, thanks to the Arts Education and Cultural Enrichment Millage, our institutions collectively served almost four hundred thousand Genesee County residents in two hundred and twenty-three. Yes, some of those were repeat visits, but yes, over four hundred thousand people were served by the millage, uh, benefits that they received. Last year, two thousand twenty-four, we surpassed that. We served over four hundred and eleven thousand county residents. The millage also supports one-of-a-kind educational opportunities for our children, the Genesee County kids in K through twelve. In two thousand twenty-three, we served over seventy-three thousand K through twelve students. That's all the way from kindergarten up through high school seniors. And that number grew to over one hundred thousand students served last year. That's a lot of programs. Uh, the millage ensures that Genesee County residents, regardless of their zip code and age and economic status, can access rich learning opportunities and experiences in our county. It empowers residents to directly sustain these cherished and countywide arts and cultural experiences, especially while state and federal funding is shrinking. And it ensures that our community continues to thrive through access, education, and creativity and cultural vitality. Now, our experience, our institutions offer a number of experiences, from concerts to shows to classes to senior programming to field trips onsite for the students. And you ought to come down sometime and see the students at Sloan Museum. We're going through the FIA. And you ought to come down sometime and see the students at Sloan Museum or going through the FIA or other areas. Not only do we provide programs in our building, we actually go out into the community. We have outreach programs that reach into every community here across Genesee County, offering hands-on activities, educational programs, performances. And these are things that county residents can't get in books or TV or the internet. These are live, in-person experiences. The millage also offers benefits to many of the county residents, like they receive free general admission to the Sloan Museum, my institution, and also to the Flint Institute of Arts. They provide discounts, like fifty percent off Longway Planetarium admission, as well as fifty, up to fifty percent off FIM venues, such as the Capitol Theater and the Whiting Auditorium. County residents also receive free arts programming, fitness activities, and community programs at Burston Fieldhouse, along with discounted tuition and classes, such as the Creative Expressions Dance Studio and the Chosen Few Arts Council. And they receive reduced ticket prices at the McCree Theater for live plays and performances. So lots of benefits for our county residents. And one more benefit that I think is very important to point out, there is a particular grant program administered by the Greater Flint Arts Council. Last year, this grant program distributed four hundred and forty thousand dollars in Share-Art Genesee Grants to twenty-five different arts and cultural institutions throughout the county, in every community. These are the smaller arts organizations that enable everyday county residents to take part and be part of arts and culture in their communities in ways they couldn't otherwise. So thank you again for your time. I'm now going to turn it over to Tracy Glad to tell you a little bit more about kind of where we've been and then into the future. Tracy?
Thank you, Todd, and good evening, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Glad, the Executive Director of the Flint Institute of Arts Museum and Art School, and it's my, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Genesee County is extremely fortunate to have such a diverse set of cultural institutions. We have world-class museums, including, if I don't say so, if I don't find saying so myself, the second-largest art museum in the state of Michigan. We have instructional and music programs for all ages. We have performing arts venues, the country's third-largest museum-connected art school, and a planetarium, as well as community centers, and of course, much more. And all of these are available to the public and help our local economy. Access to art, history, and science at our institutions improve Genesee County's way of, quality of life, creates jobs, and pours money back into our local economy. An American for the Arts two thousand twenty-two study showed that Genesee Counties, Genesee Counties Arts and Cultural Sector generated nearly a hundred and thirty million dollars in economic activity in just that year, a hundred and thirty million dollars. The Genesee County Arts Education and Cultural Enrichment Millage allows our institutions to house world-class art, artifacts, and exhibitions, and provides experiences simply not available anywhere else, and we're proud to say that. The millage is affordable, transparent, and accountable. When voters approved the millage in twenty eighteen, our organizations promised we would track every penny, and we have. Our annual independent audits are available online for public review to ensure taxpayer dollars are spent wisely. Our, one hundred percent of our funds generated by the millage are spent on providing programs, educational services, and admission to arts and culturals right here. Again, we appreciate your time this evening, we appreciate your support, and we appreciate the partnership of the Genesee County Commissioners. I'm going to turn it over to Latoya to share where we are going next.
Good evening. I'm Latoya English. I am the Fund Development Director at Friends of Burston. First, I'd like to just start by saying that I was born and raised in Flint, Michigan, with constant exposure to arts and culture through many of the organizations that are included in the Arts Education and Cultural Millage. These organizations significantly impacted my life as a child and as an adult. And now as a mother, I'm able to share the rich arts and cultural heritage of Genesee County with my own child. And our organizations continue to plan for one-of-a-kind educational opportunities for Genesee County and kids, their students, and their families, adults, and seniors. The Greater Flint Arts Council, or GFAC, continues to invest in local arts organizations through the Share-Art Genesee Grants that strengthen communities, stimulate economic growth, and make our region a more vibrant, welcoming place to live. The applications for the two thousand twenty-six Share-Art Genesee Grant are now open and available for organizations to apply through December first. GFAC also hosts art exhibitions of Michigan artists in its gallery and hosts the wildly popular Art Walk on the second Friday of every month. Sloan Museum is looking forward to hosting Ice Dinosaurs: The Lost World of the Alaskan Arctic Exhibition, which opens in January. This will be an immersive, interactive, and educational experience featuring groundbreaking discoveries, animatronic displays, real fossils, and more. The new McCree Theater will present three shows during this twenty twenty-five to twenty-five, twenty-six season, excuse me, including Joe Turner's Come and Go On, The Motown Story, and The Elaine Arkansas Massacre. In addition to providing free children's performing arts workshops that teaches children storytelling, puppetry, character development, makeup, and more through the McCree Theater repertory. At the FIA, free programs are scheduled throughout the fall, including glass-blowing demos, Bark for the Arts on the Patio, lectures, and more for all ages. Residents will receive free entrance to the FIA's exhibition, Michigan, Inc., The Art of Tattoos, until it closes in December. Plus, next year, the FIA will feature the world-renowned artist M.C. Escher. FIM has a robust two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six season planned with world-class entertainment that includes Ben Folds at the Capitol Theater, Mrs. Doubtfire, and Stump on stage at Whiting Auditorium, and the American Masterpiece Play, A Streetcar Named Desire, at the Flint Repertory Theater. At Burston, our fall programs are kicking off this month, including Creative Expression Dance Studios' Forty-Fourth Dance Season and the Chosen Few Arts Council Program for Children that offers after-school classes in drumming, visual arts, crafts, music, pottery, karate, and more. In addition, smooth-steppers line dancing and our yoga and Tai Chi programs will continue to provide practice, training, and mastery to adults and seniors in dancing and martial arts. Thanks to the Arts Education and Cultural Enrichment Millage, our Genesee residents can expire all these upcoming programs free or at a reduced cost. Thank you again for giving us an opportunity to update you on the millage and the exciting programs and experiences our organizations are producing for the residents of Genesee County. And like my colleagues, I'd like to thank all the Genesee County Commissioners for your support over the years. And I just want to remind you, if you have any questions, please reach out directly to Mark Sinella and with the Flint Cultural Center Corporation. And as Todd mentioned earlier, Mark's contact information is on page four of your handout. And Mark will show your questions with everyone in our group so that we can answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, LaJah.
All right. Are there any questions as it relates to this presentation? Any questions? Commissioner Cusano?
I have a question to Mark Sinella. You know, back a few months ago, I sat down with you and I requested some attendance data and et cetera. And I was led to believe that I would get that here, but there's very, very little here. And I've asked for that before, and I've never been able to get it.
Yeah, we've compiled that attendance. Some of that attendance data is within that handout packet. We can give you, we can get you the detailed.
Yeah, because, you know, I was part of, you know, most of these people, if not all of them, weren't around when we first did this. And I was very active in setting up the MOU between the county and your organization.
Yes, sir.
And all those, all that data should be kept up to date at all point in time. And I was a little shocked that when I asked those questions, you put me off until this presentation in September. And I couldn't understand then why you had to put the answers to that off to now, and I don't, still don't see them. I'm deeply concerned. You know that. We've had a lot of conversations, you know, over the years about how this is spent and distributed throughout the county, in particular, the five hundred thousand dollars that Gfact handles. And I'm still extremely concerned about that. And I would like some answers. Thank you.
I will get some follow-up to you immediately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions, Commissioner Weehill?
Not so much a question, but hello, Mark. How are you?
Yeah, good, thank you.
Just a statement. So I have an out-county district, and, you know, there is a sense among some people that they, that they're not getting value from some millages, including this one at times. So what I'm trying to do, and you know this because we've had a conversation, is make connections between the institutions that are in the room and you with my constituents and groups of my constituents so that they, we can do new things for them through the millage dollars and through the organizations. But also, of course, letting them know what is already happening and what they already can take advantage of. So one example was Friday morning, I was at the Carmen Ainsworth Senior Center and talking with the Director Eileen and the Chair of the Board Veronica and Mary, who's the Vice Chair, and gave them Tracy's email address. And I don't know if they've reached out yet. You're already connected. So what I'm trying to do as a Commissioner is be an ambassador for, you know, as long as the millage is there and the services are there, making sure that people who may not know about them know about them. So appreciate the work that you're doing. I should say that I'm a member of the FIA Board as a volunteer and really enjoy the organization and support it in that way, and would like to continue supporting all of you through the millage, assuming that we can maybe make a few tweaks to it going forward, which we discussed a little bit. So thank you for all, for all of you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there any additional comments or questions? Okay, seeing none, I have some. First of all, thank you all so much for coming and providing the presentation. Just a couple of concerns that I'd like to raise, but I want to preface my comments and questions with this. I support the Greater Flint Arts Council. I support the Flint Institute of Science and History. I support the Flint Institute of Music, the Whiting, and the Capitol. I support the Flint Institute of Arts, definitely enjoy going there. I support the Floyd J. McCree Theater. I support the Friends of Burston. And I think I already mentioned the Greater Flint Arts Council. What I don't support is the huge disparity between what is provided to certain organizations over others. Looking at the report from just the ACHs for two thousand twenty-five, beginning in January, there's, I've noticed from the report that there there has been four times the amount of resources allocated and given to some organizations, while there are other arts, other entities that have received four times less. There are organizations, and you would understand it, Mr. Sinella, that have received two-point-five million dollars, four-point-eight million dollars, two-point-four million dollars. And then when I look at the McCree Theater, for instance, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. Friends of Burston, Burston Fieldhouse in my district, five-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand dollars. Greater Flint Arts Council, and I'm interested in the concerns that my colleague raised, and we should certainly receive the answers more requested in a timely manner. So that's disappointing to hear, but one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so I'm sure that when these numbers were determined, somebody believed that this made sense. But as the pass-through for these funds collected from the residents of Genesee County with the purpose of supporting these arts, resources that we collect at Genesee County that are collected here, resources that we then forward to the Cultural Center Foundation, I don't send them as a pass-through. What I don't support is organizations not being supported equally to the extent that the ratio makes sense. The entities that I listed, Floyd McCree Theater, Friends of Burston, Greater Flint Arts Council, they don't even receive one-third of what the other organizations receive. And that doesn't make sense to me. And so I would like to, I would like for you to speak to it. My understanding is you're the CEO. It's nice to meet you. Appreciate the work you do. But I would like to hear from you in this setting, why that is. Help me to understand the rationale and, and help to convince me, help me to understand why that makes sense. Because I want to be honest with you, without adjustments to that, I'm inclined not to support sending these resources next year. Unless there are adjustments, because the other arts, you know, over in this area, beautiful, beautiful. But how do we even expect the other arts and the other areas that also serve community to grow if they don't have the support? And the residents of my district, and it's a large district, it's the north side, it's folks on the south side, the east side. It's downtown. I represent people downtown. I, I don't think, who frequent all of these locations, I don't think residents in my district, I'm sure there are residents that won't be happy, understanding that that's how their tax dollars are being. Because there's a lot of people, in conclusion, in my district that never go to the Flint Institute of Music in the Whiting and Capitol, that never go to the Flint Institute of Arts, that never go to the Flint Institute of Science and History. So can you speak to that? What is the rationale for the disparity? And why not at least a third allocation for those other organizations?
Yes, sir. Thank you. So back in, I believe, two thousand seventeen, we got together before the millage was even established. And we had met with the millage recipients, including the late Bryant Nolan. And he was actively involved with this, this millage. And these numbers were established by all the entities as far as part of their operating budget. And with that, the cultural center entities have a much larger operating budget, which comprises of, the millage today comprises around twenty to twenty-five percent, I believe, of their operating budget. And based on the size, number of employees, activities, the expense of the programs that they bring in, that's how the agreement came about amongst all the millage institutions. And that was established in the, in the wording to the county commissioners back in, I believe, twenty, late twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And that was approved by the county commissioners at that time. And the millage is a ten-year millage, and that's, that's how it was established. Do you have anything to add to that, Todd, or Rodney, or Tracy?
Oh, I think you said it well, Mark.
So as a follow-up question, thank you so much, and I appreciate you indulging me on these questions. You mentioned larger operation budget, more employees, more activities, more programs, thus larger costs. But I'm sure that if the other centers had additional resources allocated, they could have more activities. They could have more programs.
Very possible.
They could have more staff and more programs. So this is a question as it relates to the way you all determine what that budget looks like. Does each of the entities, if you will, submit to you a budget of some sort of not just maybe what they've done in the past, but what they're hoping to do in the next fiscal year? Help me understand, help us understand, how do you come to what this organization should get versus the other? Because all of them could have a lot of employees, big budgets, activities, and programs. Do you ask them, what is it that you want to have fun? What do you want to do in the next year? Like, what does that look like?
No, we don't ask.
And I'm totally, and I'm totally ignorant to it, honestly.
Sure, sure. So the, the allocation is by the mills, by a part of the millage rate base. And that is a reoccurring number based on what the county gives us in property tax revenue on a year-to-year basis. And those numbers get flowed through right to the institutions for their operate, part of their operating expense. None of those, none of those funds are used for anything with assets. It's strictly expenses, such as, you know, employee wages, healthcare. It's strictly expenses such as, you know, employee wages, healthcare, you know, just electrical utilities, things of that nature.
Thank you. And I'll conclude shortly. So here at Genesee County, we just had the presentation for our 2025, 2026 budget. Our Finance Chair Commissioner Kuzno leads that effort, our Vice Chair Commissioner Gary Getzinger. And we bring in all of the department heads, including some you heard from tonight, our clerk, our prosecutor attorney, all of the departments of the county. And we ask them amongst a number of questions, what is it that you won't fund it the next year? Why do you need it funded? What are you looking to do? Are there certain projects? How does it impact the county, our, our core values? How does it impact our priorities? Tell us how much money you need to do what you desire to do. And each department goes through that process and they say, well, you know, we don't do this now, but we're looking to do this, so we need additional resources for this, et cetera, and so on and so forth. My question is, when you determine what you allocate to each of these entities, do you have a process like that where you don't look at a snapshot of what they have for this year, but for the next fiscal year, you bring them in and say, what is it you desire to do? How much is that going to cost? And then we'll factor that into what the allocation is, A. Or do you look at what you've traditionally done and say, okay, we're going to fund back at that level because they have, this staff needs to be funded? Or is there another way that you go about doing it?
It's primarily traditionally how it has been done, just because of the, the amount of the funds that do come in are just a portion of, of their overall budget. But it's something that we can definitely talk about and look at.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I'm, I'm going to digress, but I'm, I'm going to say this. I don't think, I support folks that are on the board, personal friends with some, you know, some are part of networks. So this isn't indictment on any individual. It's a, a concern of the disparity that exists. And based on what you have shared, and unfortunately, you're the CEO that's standing here, so you get the questions, right? Unfortunately, it does not sound like there is a process that's fair to those that are on the short end of the dispersments each year. Three, one second.
Yeah.
Three entities that there are folks in my district who go to some that are funded less, and there are some that go to those that are funded higher. To me, I support all of the arts and I support all of the entities equally, but the dispersments are not equal. And without a process by which those who are getting less than a third of everybody else, unless there's a process where they're able to provide what they desire to do, to kind of bolster those programs and those arts to the level of the others, if you don't provide them that opportunity and you continue to do as you just said, which is fund folks at the level that they've been at, I don't think that that's what the residents, I'll speak in my district, desire for you to do with their resources.
Yeah.
They won't, go ahead.
I think that's something that we can definitely collaboratively take a look at.
Yes, so any support I can provide as one commissioner, I don't, I'm not a part of making the decision there. It's, it's that board, but certainly I have a vote on whether or not those resources are sent to you. I'm telling you from me, one commissioner, I'm only one vote, I'd like to see the process changed. And I'd like to see the tax dollars that we collect from our, from the residents across Genesee County, I'd like to see them dispersed on an equitable basis. I'm not suggesting you go give, you know, it's got to be equal, but it's got to be fair opportunity for every entity. Right now, I haven't heard that that exists. So I'll digress, that's my concern. Are there any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chair, oh, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead, yeah.
Go, go ahead, real quick.
We only received the presentation here, and you all didn't go over this page by page. But just for my colleagues, I want to point out, it's not numbered, but it does look like there is some data in here per, based on districts.
Yes.
And in terms of, so you've got, is this employees of the institutions that live in our districts? Is that what this, the first line is?
Is, I'm not sure, page you're looking at, I'm sorry.
Well, this one right here. So the, the first line on the chart says number of employees per district.
That is correct.
Those are folks who work for you all but live, live in the county.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, and then the second line. The second line in the chart is number of visitors per year based from our districts. And I, I think I heard someone say, it was Utah, that that's a duplicated number probably.
Yes, that, that can represent repeat visits from different people. Obviously, I don't believe there are 400,000 people in Genesee County. So obviously, several people are coming to out, to dance with artists.
Yep, I think I've been to every institution at least once in the past year, so you counted me like six times. And then field trips are listed by district. Tell me again, the Share Art Genesee Grants, is that what Greg does out of the Arts Council? Okay, so then you've also outlined how many of those grants are going to our district. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. I just wanted to point out, we do have some data here that we can look at. Thank you.
We can drill that data down.
I think that's what Commissioner Kuzno is looking for.
No, I'm looking for expanded over a lot of years, not just two snapshots.
All right, thank you so much, Mark and team, for your presentation. Thank you for indulging me.
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Just want to say thank you for coming, thank you for reaching out in the past. To the chair's comments, though, if we are going to start distributing this fairly, I know Grand Blake Township, Fenton Township, who are some of our larger providers of the tax base, would like their fair share also then in smart programs, if we're going to look at it that way. I understand it makes it difficult for you if you're considering everyone like that. So the challenge is in front of you. But if, if we are and you are going to consider the chair's notion, these other organizations need their fair share. I know there's several members of the Out County, I know that Grand Blake Township and Fenton Township alone would be glad to have their fair share of what they pay in. And I'm sure there's others that would feel the same way. So task in front of you, I mean, I, I, I hope you communicate with us more. I appreciate you guys reaching out, I, I really do. But that's been, I've been down here six years and that's the first time. So, you know, so like I said, I, I do appreciate it, though, and I appreciate the information. I hope Commissioner Kuzno, you'll share what you get to him with the rest of us. That would be greatly appreciated also. Thank you.
Yep, will do.
Thank you. Any additional comments? And add a way to the county, we are still above 400,000 residents, by the way. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night. All right. Now we have before us Resolution 2025, approval under appointments tonight. The approval of two Genesee Health System appointments, they are in fact general member seats for three-year terms expiring March 31st, 2028. If you remember, recall, these appointments were before us in our previous meeting. We voted to postpone these appointments to continue voting tonight to ensure that the appointees receive five votes to be appointed. We're going to pick up where we left off last meeting, our last full board meeting, and we were in round one of, of, and the seat one of these two seat appointments. Where we left off, there were two names that were available to us after multiple rounds of voting. And those names are for the first seat, that is, Crystal Alexander and Chia Morgan. So as I defer to the clerk for the first round of votes, for the first seat, there are only two names available for us to be nominated in this round. These two individuals, I want to make sure I captured it right, these two individuals were the two that received the highest votes on the last round of voting that we had. Am I missing anything? Okay.
Mr. Chair, if I might, there, we did select one at the last meeting, and that was Ellen Burke. There were three seats total. She got enough votes to take the first one, and now we're on to the, the other two.
Thank you so much. All right, so for this round of votes, I'm going to call on the clerk to begin our voting. The only two names that are in nomination at this time are, again, Crystal Alexander and Chia Morgan. Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Chia Morgan.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Avery.
Alexander.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Crystal Alexander.
Commissioner Kuzno.
Alexander.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Morgan.
Commissioner Flouelling.
Alexander.
Six votes for Crystal Alexander, two votes for Chia Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Crystal Alexander has been appointed to the seat one for Genesee Health System, general member seat for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2028. Now that brings us to the second seat for our consideration tonight. All 10, all, well, the individuals listed, all individuals listed are available for appointment. We just appointed Crystal Alexander, so one through nine remains names available to be nominated for the second round. Any questions? All right, roll call, Madam Clerk.
If I, if I may.
Oh, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. For those of you who noticed, Mr. Freeman was nice enough again to distribute a attendance packet for GHS. He was also kind enough to distribute, and I requested, a packet for the DEI committee also on there because there is a member who also attends those meetings, just for your general information. And then in addition to that, also, he put a map in there so you can kind of see where the distribution is of members throughout the county, so thank you very much.
It's appreciated.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments or questions? I did note that there's a sheet before us that has attendance here. I'll just make this comment, I believe that there are things, there, I, I do believe that things can happen where a person is not able to attend a meeting. And in a year's period of time, for me, you know, three out of 12 meetings, missing a meeting, not knowing the circumstances is not, is not something that's extreme to me in a year period of time. And so I just wanted to make just that statement, based on the information received.
If no one else wants to speak, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Shoemaker.
The whole, the point of this, so everyone understands where we started off, was years ago, we created an appointment committee under Commissioner Kuzno when he was chair, and we tried to make sure we're putting the best candidate forward we could. So we're putting someone who wants to be there, okay, who's, who's going to be there, is going to show up, who's going to participate, and kind of carries out what this board's vision is for the county. A year later, unfortunately, people didn't agree with that because guess what? They couldn't get their person in because they might not have their credentials or whatever else like that. So we stopped the process, and if you've noticed, since we started the process back up, there's a list of names again. Compared to before, when you'd come to these meetings and most of your county employees are part of the county, you notice there'd be one name. And I'd ask, Mr. Freeman, this is all we got, and he'd shake his head, yes. And now we have this wonderful list of, of people who want to be part of some of these boards. But in the list also, Mr. Freeman, he was asked to provide a few other things, where they were, their attendance records. And we have three years of attendance records for GHS. I'm not going to call out any member, but there are, you know, one year, yes, something might happen, two years, something might happen. When you have three years of not showing a majority of the, or a large percentage of the meetings, I don't think you should be put back on there. I will be very frank, I was on the DEI committee. After a period of time, I said, no, if you want to look at the paper, I showed up to eight meetings out of three years. I don't hide from it, I asked to be removed from it because I wasn't going. I shouldn't be on that board because I was not going. So if you can't show the majority of the time, I don't think you should be on it. And you'd have the respect for other people not to put your name back in the, the hat. Because there are people who want to participate. It's not like you're elected, or people have chose that. We chose that as a board, so we should choose people who show. I think we have responsibility to the residents of this county. We put a process in place. I think it's a process in evolution. Mr. Wayhill and I have had some discussions, and I, I think he's got some great recommendations we need to add to it. He's going to be included in our next meeting, so we can make sure we add those. But I think attendance is important. I think we need to really push that, and I think it's not just one year. Yes, one year is just a period of time, that's a snapshot. You know, if, if we've all had those managers that walk in and guess what? As soon as they see something, they're like, oh, guess what? That's what's going on. No, this is, three years is enough to tell you what's going on. So to my colleagues, I hope you consider that because that's one of the things we wanted to look at. And moving forward, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Any other comments and discussion before we start appointments? I'll just make one concluding comment is that I think, I think we should look at attendance. I think that we should look at other things as well, kind of like a holistic picture. One of the things I look at is engagement, contribution, participation, and overall impact. And there's somebody who I plan to support tonight for this appointment, I won't call the name at this time, but somebody I plan to support at this time, not just looking at attendance, but because of the overwhelming impact, the service, and also the presence of the individual today. I'd never seen her before, but I certainly have heard about contributions. And are there any other individuals here in the room who is being nominated tonight for GHS? If you'll stand, I just want to know if there's any other applicants that are present, any applicants whatsoever that are here. All right, and then we heard from one applicant, if you could just stand one more time, who spoke tonight. This applicant is present, and there are someone who's nominated, Mrs. Reeves. So, Commissioner, thank you.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Chairman, I don't think that attendance at board meetings solely indicates the level of participation, because with most of these boards, you also attend subcommittee meetings, committee meetings, task force meetings. So I, you know, I don't, I don't think that's even reflected, you know, in just attending board meetings. I just want to make that statement.
Okay, any additional comments or, or questions? Okay, Madam Clerk, this is round two. Names one through nine, nominees one through nine are available for our consideration tonight.
Commissioner Lloyd.
Dr. Angela Reeves.
Commissioner Winfrey.
Dr. Reeves.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Scott Hines.
Commissioner Avery.
Dr. Reeves.
Commissioner Shoemaker.
Scott Hines.
Commissioner Kuzno.
I don't have a recommendation.
Commissioner Wayhill.
Dr. Reeves.
Commissioner Flouelling.
Reeves.
Sorry, I'm counting. That was five votes for Dr. Reeves, two votes for Dr. Hines, and I believe one pass.
All right, Dr. Angela Reeves has been appointed to a seat on the Genesee Health System, general member seat for a three-year term expiring March 31st, 2028. Thank you. Next before us, we have Resolution 2025-2301, approval of a request to advertise for a vacant position on the Genesee County Road Commission. This will be for a partial term expiring on 12/31/2027. I should have deferred to you, Mr. Chair, of appointments. Commissioner Shoemaker.
You've already, you've already got it.
I move it.
Support it.
Okay, it's been moved and supported. Any dis, moved by, who moved it? Winfrey, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there a discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Resolution 2025-2304, approval of a request to advertise the two seats on the Genesee County District Library. The four-year terms will expire on 8/31/2029.
Who would support?
All right, it's been moved and supported, you captured that. All right, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion passes. Now we have before us the reports of the standing committees, Board of Commissioners. We'll start with Resolution 2025-2221, adoption of fiscal year 2025, 2026 budget appropriations resolution. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Kuzno for his pleasure.
Well, I move it.
All right, it's been moved by Commissioner Shoemaker. Is there support? Supported by our Vice Chair Finance, we probably should have had this under Finance, but I understand how important it is, all right? Supported by our Finance Chair, motion made by our Finance Chair, supported by our Finance Vice Chair. Is there any discussion? All right, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to thank all of our staff that worked hard in the- I wanted to thank all of our staff that worked hard on this, Commissioner Kuzno. I know he always works hard on this, I appreciate the hours. I appreciate, Crystal is always answering all my questions after the fact, because I can't be down here for the majority of the meetings during the budget stuff, so I always appreciate that, and the emails, and the effort you put into that. I unfortunately will be voting no. I voted no on all the contracts also, you know, I, we haven't settled the last contract. Once we have that last one settled, I'll be glad to give you a reason why I'm voting no on everything. Until that's settled, I will just say this, I don't feel that the obligations we promised we can live up to, and there are other obligations we have as far as long-term leviccy debt and a few other things, so, but I appreciate the work they put in, the majority of it, like I said, I think is wonderful. I, like I said, thank Commissioner Kuzno again, I thank Crystal, as always, for tolerating me and my harassment, so.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Shoemaker. Any additional?
Strictly on the finance side, just so you know.
You know, I was going to come behind you, but.
Got to be clear, got to be clear anymore.
Yeah, right. Yes, sir. Any additional discussion? I echo the sentiments of our Vice Chair, Commissioner Shoemaker, in, in that the staff and Crystal and our Chair and Vice Chair of Finance did a phenomenal job, as well as the team. All those have supported this process. It is a cumbersome process, a lengthy process with a lot of thoughtfulness and due diligence that's required, and each year, when we do it, is one of our primary responsibilities. It is a huge undertaking, and so just kudos to all of them, and then also to my colleagues that attended budget hearings and those, whether in person or in Zoom, appreciate you as well. And this just shows that, you know, as a board, we're being responsible collectively to our residents in this responsibility, and kudos to all of us. I know we have to do it by law, but to have a balanced budget where it doesn't result in massive layoffs and closure of facilities and so on and so forth, we have a lot of work to do going forward, to, to build upon where we are, to strengthen Genesee County, and to continue to grow. And I believe with the team that we have, the board that we have, the support we have from the residents, that we'll be able to continue to move Genesee County forward. Are there any other comments? All right, sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Our fiscal year 2025-2026 budget resolution has been adopted. Next, we have our Community Economic Development Committee. Our Vice Chair is Dale Wayhill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 2025-2161, approval of purchase orders to various vendors for fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $2,108,786.40 to provide home improvement repairs for Genesee County's Home Improvement and Urgent Repair Program. The cost of this purchase order is fully grant-funded and will be paid from the accounts listed.
All right, moved by Commissioner Wayhill, supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I wanted to ask Derek a question or two, and forgive me if these were asked last week and I missed it. So, I was looking at the, the funding mechanism for this, and it's part federal and part state, so home dollars, CDBG, then there was SNP, which I don't know what that is.
So, you're right, it's a combination of state and federal dollars, so we received some dollars for MISTHA, for our program. We have funds that are home dollars from the federal government, and we also have CDBG dollars.
SNP was another acronym in there, what?
I'd have to look up specifically.
Okay, that's fine. It's, it's immaterial.
Yep.
The, the point I want to make is, or ask about, I guess, are, are any of these funds in jeopardy of being reduced, cut? I, I saw an article, and I didn't delve into the article itself, I guess I should say I saw a headline, about home dollars, perhaps under some scrutiny in terms of cutting. Is this money in the bank right now, or is this dependent on the new federal budget year October 1st?
Thank you, Commissioner. So this money has already been allocated by the federal government, so any changes that they look to do in the upcoming year will be for next year's budget for us.
The new budget year.
You are correct, they've, they've talked a couple things at, at different times. CDBG at the start wasn't proposed to be in the budget or home at all. I've, you know, I've heard different rumblings that, you know, CDBG might be in there at a lower level, but, you know, until, you know, the budget process, until you get to the end of the budget process. I've heard elimination of the home program, which is a challenge, because that's housing, that's how we build new housing. And then I've also heard some rumblings of maybe a, a, a different, completely different program when it comes to housing. So, you know, I think it's a kind of a stay tuned and keep, keep your ear to the ground, and as things go forward, you know, we'll see where that ends up.
Understood. The last question, the MISTHA dollars appear to be from, well, they're, they're through the state, but they don't originate at the federal level, do they?
Correct, no, they're state dollars.
Okay, so those, well, I guess those could be in jeopardy, because we may have a shutdown in.
So there is a lot, I will say with state and federal dollars at this point, there is a lot of nuances, I'll just say that.
That's a very deft way of putting it, Derek. You're turning into a very good politician. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Derek.
Thank you, Derek. Commissioner. All right. Is there any further discussion? Sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2164, approval of a purchase order to the Genesee County Land Bank for the fiscal year ending 2026 to provide for budgeted property acquisition costs for Genesee County's Neighborhood Stabilization Program and Neighborhood Rehab Resale Programs.
Support. All right, moved and supported, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Any discussion? Sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Nay? How many nays?
I said aye.
All right, let's do this again. All, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. I don't know what's gotten into us tonight.
Split vote now.
Long meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This one's gonna be a little shorter, though. Okay, all right, Commissioner.
Wayhill.
Wayhill.
I have no report, or is this an, do we have an add-on?
We do have an add-on.
Yes.
Is that what this is? All right, well, this is the first time I'm seeing it, so we'll call it add-on number one, and I've not read it at all, because I just got it, so I, I guess I'll move.
Why don't, why don't we do this?
I'll move it to open it for discussion.
Add it to the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. So it's been moved by Commissioner Kuzno and supported by Commissioner Shoemaker to add it to the agenda. Is there any discussion about adding it to the agenda? All right, sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, it has been added to the agenda.
Okay, I'll move it to open it up for discussion and explanation.
Been moved and supported to begin discussion. Is there a discussion?
Could we have Mr. Bradshaw step up and explain it?
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. I apologize for doing this as an add-on. We received this grant app, this grant award late Thursday. We were hoping to do it at the last meeting for the month. Received communication this morning from the state that we need the grant agreement signed by tomorrow, close of business tomorrow, in order for it to be funded this year in the budget. So, kind of without, not within our control. This $263,000 and some change is dollars that are, come through the state of Michigan through tipping fees, through solid waste for landfills, et cetera. And this is the first time that the state of Michigan is actually now funding the solid waste and solid waste management activities in counties in the state of Michigan. In the past, it was kind of an unfunded mandate. With some of the changes at the state now, they are really looking to do more targeted material management planning in each of the counties in the state of Michigan. So each county in the state of Michigan, there's a formula. This is a formula money that comes in. This, these dollars, 100% state dollars, no match, no grant, they will be used to help offset the costs that we're spending currently today on our solid waste management plan that we have currently underway. So these, much needed and much appreciated that now at a statewide level, they're actually funding things that in the past they have not done.
All right, is there? Could I follow up? Yes, sir.
Not knowing for sure, but where does the state, where do they get the funding?
So they would get, this funding comes from tipping fees from landfills, for example.
That's what I thought.
Yep. Yep, and then in Genesee County, we have our own solid waste ordinance that provides us funding as well.
Yeah, I'm through, I'm sorry. Commissioner Shoemaker.
Yeah, Derek, thank you. Thank you for the emails yesterday, even though it was later in the day, I still appreciate getting them beforehand. Next up, my, my, and the question with this is, is this going to be a reoccurring allocation?
Yes.
You know, they're working on next year's budget, and they can't seem to come to an agreement over there now, but my question is, why so late then with this? Because if the budget was passed, what, what department and why?
We put an application in for this probably close to a year ago. We've been waiting on this grant application for months, to be honest.
What state of Michigan department was it?
Through Eagle, so. But yes, so this, this funding is, is repetitive funding, so I think it's, and I'll have to go back, I think it's three years or five years, I think it might be five years for the next, we should see this now. Now that they finally got this contract underway, this was a new program for them, we should, I would hope to expect to see this on a more regular, timely basis.
Are there certain things, these funds can be spent on, limitations? Can you kind of fill us in on what those would be?
Sure, so the funds can be used for things in, in general terms, staff costs in order to update our material management plan. So currently, we're right in the process right now of updating our material management plan. We probably have about another year left, so any of those costs, staff costs, can be allocated to that. Above and beyond the staff cost for implementing that, the funds can also be used for implementation of the material management plan, right? So once we get the plan done, those costs, we can direct to some of the activities that we want to do to implement. So those could be current activities we do now, so some of our household hazardous waste events potentially, right? You know, as we get into the details, you know, brand-new program for the state, so as we get into those details, we're going to take a look at what opportunities we can have, which will be good, because it'll really start to see more of an investment from the state in every community, where right now, we were kind of doing things just kind of solely on ourselves, so we're, we're excited to see some additional revenue.
Any additional discussion?
Just one, couple more, maybe, depends what Derek answers me with. These funds, obviously, tip fees when they're dumped, are they just, are they for everyone? Are they for out of, out of country, or out of state dumping, or is, is it just everyone?
So in the state of Michigan, it's for any, any person that dumps in a landfill, or sorry, deposits waste, or fancy term for that.
So in one way or the other, the residents are paying for it, just?
Right, but in the case of Michigan, Michigan is a, and I don't have the stat in front of me, we do receive a fair amount of waste from outside Genesee County, or outside the state of Michigan. So those people that do that, they have to pay it as well. So yes, we'll, some of this revenue comes from that.
Thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? Commissioner?
Real quick, so the philosophy on this, as I understand, I just looked through it, I was listening to what you were saying, we're moving away from landfill, or trying to focus more on recycling in, in, like the hazardous waste material events that we do, and this is in line with that, and the recycling center that we hope to build over on Chavez and Robert T. Longway?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Those are very popular things, I've been asked about those a lot lately, and I'm sending folks to you, are you getting phone calls?
Yes.
And emails? Okay.
Yep.
All right, good, thank you. I support this.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, one comment, Derek, you're gonna get it, because you're standing here, not in the sense of get it, but what I like to see is that each, for all of the departments, and maybe we should send a communication out, because I know it's late and you kind of sent it to us, there's no issue, but what I like to see is like the departments, if we have an add-on that's coming to the full meeting, that I appreciate the courtesy, but that we reach out to the, the committee chairs as well, at least so that they have an opportunity to be abreast of whatever it is before it comes, because in this setting, they're presenting what's a part of their agenda. So that's the only thing that I would say, and maybe we can just have a communication, go to all department heads, a, a list of what departments fall under what committees, so that all of our department heads know which chairperson to reach out to when either send a media communication, make sure we include them, want them to be abreast. So thank you. Nothing for you, not beating you up, but.
Duly noted.
It's just something we just can clean up a little bit. All right, any other discussion? All right, sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Do you have a report from Economic Development?
I have no report.
All right, thank you, sir. Finance Committee, Martin Kuzno, Chairperson, Gary Gatzinger, Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 25-0023, approval request by Genesee County Sheriff Office to eliminate the position of Director of Community Engagement and create post and fill the position of Lieutenant of the Sheriff's Office in a dictation team.
All right, been moved and supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion? All right, sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-2138, approval of proposed budget amendment to the 2425 appropriations resolution for various line items as described in the attached budget adjustment request.
Support. All right, any discussion? Supported by Commissioner Shoemaker. Sing no discussion, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I move Resolution 25-2139, forwarding to receive and file a copy of the paid county bills for the weeks ending July 20th, '25 through August 17, '25, in the total amount of $21,30,038.36.
All right, supported by Commissioner Charles Winfrey. Is there any discussion? All right, sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-2159, approval of request authorized in the Board Chair to execute a commercial card agreement with Huntington Bank.
All right, is there any discussion? Supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Any discussion? All right, Commissioner Winfrey? Commissioner Gatzinger supported it.
Yep.
All right, sing no discussion, I'd like to thank our purchasing department for providing the information that you provided relative to the P cards. I'll be following up with additional conversation, communication. I will likely bring forth some additional policies for the board's consideration, just to make sure that we have some, some additional policies on the books for us, just to make sure whoever's in your role, as you do a great job, that, that the P card piece stays under the guidance of county policy. All right, any additional discussion? Sing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
I move Resolution 25-2163, approval of the self-insurance auto trust agreement and MOU with the state of Michigan.
Been moved, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion? Sing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. All right, is there a report from the Finance Committee?
Not at this time, Mr. Chair, thank you.
The biggest piece of Finance Committee's business was taken care of already.
Yeah.
Right.
A very, very long process.
All right, thank you. Government Operations Committee, Dale Wayhill, Chairperson, Sean Shoemaker, Vice Chairperson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move Resolution 2025-2078, approval of a resolution recognizing October 2025 as Indian Heritage Month in Genesee County.
Support.
All right, been moved and supported by Commissioner Avery. Is there any discussion?
Just for the record that I read it last week, so I won't read it again tonight.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Gatzinger.
As in the past, you know, I'm...
As in the past, you know, I'm not a resolution guy, I think we have other important businesses to do, and I don't like singling out groups and leaving other groups out, so I will be voting no on this.
Thank you, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Two nays.
I move Resolution 2025-2092, approval of a request by Genesee County Specialty Court not to exceed 143,716.20 for one year to provide staffing for the court. The cost of this request will be paid from opioid settlement funds.
Support. All right, it's been moved, supported by Commissioner Winfrey. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Shoemaker, and then Commissioner Fluele.
Well, he wants to go first, that's fine.
Commissioner Fluele.
So just, I'm going to support this, but just a general question, how much is left in those, how much of those funds are left? Does anybody know?
Is Marlene there? She's
Good evening, Commissioners, my name is Tiffany, I am the Coordinator for Community Corrections, I'm here for Marlene.
Good evening.
So with that question, I don't have the answer to that one since she oversees that part, but I know they have used some funding already, and she'll give that to you.
Yeah, if you could just
Yeah, no problem.
Shoot me an email with, you know, how much has been used and what for, and how much is left.
Yep, 100%.
Thank you, Commissioner Fluele, and Commissioner Shoemaker.
Thank you. Crystal, could you come up here real quick, please?
Currently, there's just about $7 million in cash in that fund, the old paid fund.
If I may continue, Mr. Chair. You know, after the conversation we had this, I got thinking about it, and I know we can enter into certain investments, they have to be, they're very particular about what we can invest money in to return. But I thought if the, we want to keep these funds even longer instead of just blowing through them and guarantee as the funds may diminish from the federal government or the state, what I was thinking is we could take that money and actually, and the Board would have to decide on this, but invest it, and therefore, we'd always have a return that we could distribute annually to the court, and if they spend it, great, if not, it would stay in there, but we could come up with a, an amount to consistently fund this type of a program without dipping into, you know, the major, the principal of the fund, yeah.
Yeah, they're currently being invested, the Treasurer's Office tries to look out as far as they can invest. When we have a better idea of the timing of the spending, when you, as you approve those projects, and what, how long those will take, then the Treasurer's Office will have a better idea of how long they can invest and tie up those funds to maybe get some more higher returns.
I think that's something, thank you, Crystal. The Finance Chair, maybe we should look at as a Board, just as an idea, because if you took even, I mean, if there, what'd you say, how much was in there again?
There's about $7 million right now in that fund.
So the hundred and some thousand we're trying to fund here would be easily funded with the, even a low returning investment, so something just maybe to think about, move forward.
Yeah, I'm in total agreement with that.
Are you through, Mr. Shoemaker?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mark.
Commissioner Cusino?
I think I know the answer to this, but this is Tiffany. I assume with Marlene as the Chair of this, or the leader of this group, that she has approved this.
Yes.
This spending.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, Commissioner Fluele.
One more quick question, I'm not a finance or investment expert like you and Mr. Muma, of course, but does the county qualify for M-class?
Yes, we do have some funds in Michigan class.
Okay, okay, all right. Just curious, we do it in the
Yeah, anytime we want to keep something a little more liquid, we put it in Michigan class because it's a good return, but it's still available if we need it.
We've seen great returns with it, so, okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Wayhill.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd, is it? So I want to thank Mr. Freeman, I assume it was him making the adjustments not to exceed the amount because it could come in less, I think that's what we were told last week. And also, the one-year piece of it has been added, so we have clarity. And then I just want to thank Judge Weir, Judge Lachana, and Judge Hannibal for being present tonight and sharing your passion around this topic, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? Just one comment from me, I appreciate the judges coming to speak to this, and, you know, I just want to be, you know, clear to the public that I don't believe there was ever a period where it was ever in the intention of the Board not to consider this item and to give it as due consideration. Never heard anybody on this Board suggest that they're not in support of this item or of the work that the courts are doing. And, and so I just want to say that on the record. That's it. Any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2093, approval to increase purchase order 24-02274 by $10,000 to ZOTUS in an amount not to exceed $55,000 to provide required vaccine supplies to meet the need of Genesee County's animal population.
All right, it's been supported by Commissioner Sean Shoemaker, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2104, approval of a letter of agreement, Amendment Number One for fiscal year 2026 between Genesee County Community Corrections and Genesee County Sheriff's Office regarding the Residential Substance Abuse Treatment, RSAT, in-kind matching grant for a RISE Deputy Coordinator.
Support. All right, supported by Commissioner Winfrey, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2134, approval of a proposed amendment to the 2024-2025 Appropriations Resolution, reallocating expenditures within the Community Corrections Budget.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Winfrey, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2141, approval of a request to rename and reorganize the Department of Community Corrections to the Department of Community Engagement and Justice Services.
Support.
All right, it's been supported by Commissioner Winfrey, I mean Avery, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Nay.
All right, motion passes, before we proceed, our Director of Animal Control is in the room, will you stand? All right, we just passed the resolution of the renaming of the Department of Community Corrections to the Department of Community Engagement and Justice Services. The renaming of your department is a resolution that's coming back to governmental operations for our consideration as previously committed to you, just wanted to make sure you knew that. Thank you. Commissioner Wayhill.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair, I move Resolution, trying to think where I'm at here, am I at 2150?
Yes.
Okay, so thank you. I move Resolution 2025-2150, approval of a purchase order to Kavetris North America for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $95,000 to provide vaccines, medical, and surgical supplies at Genesee County's Animal Control. The cost of this purchase order will be paid from the account listed.
Support. All right, supported by Commissioner Shoemaker, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2151, approval of a purchase order to ZOTUS for the fiscal year ending 2026 in an amount not to exceed $50,000 to provide for the purchase of preventative vaccines at Genesee County's Animal Control. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Shoemaker, discussion Wayhill and Shoemaker.
I was just going to, I was just going to ask, we moved all three resolutions for Animal Control, so all the way down to Resolution 2025, 2154.
Okay, so you want to, so I'll withdraw my motion, and I'll move numbers eight, nine, and 10. So 2151, 2153, 2154, is that what you were
Please.
asking? So moved.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Shoemaker to move items eight through 10 under the Government Operations Committee, is there any discussion, any separations? Seeing no separations, any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I move Resolution 2025-2175, approval of an agreement between Genesee County and Stoltman Law, PLLC, in an amount not to exceed 167,500 dollars to provide mandated legal representation of respondents and associated legal services in probate court proceedings. The cost of this agreement will be paid from the account listed.
Support. Supported by Commissioner Cusino, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion passes. Is there a report from Government Operations Committee?
No report.
All right, thank you so much, Human Services Committee, Commissioner Charles Winfrey, Chairperson, Vice Chairperson, Commissioner James Avery, wish you pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I move items one through 32.
Support.
I'll double that support.
So motion made by Commissioner Winfrey, thank you Commissioner Avery and Cusino. All right, is there, are there any separations?
Well, I've got some questions before, because I might be fine with it and I might not, and I'm a little bad, won't know on every single thing, if it's given veterans, seniors' funds, so
So we'll open discussion on items one through 33?
Thirty-two?
Thirty-two. Commissioner Shoemaker.
I just was wondering, you know, there was statement made that, did, that we, did we cut funds to other organizations to increase the senior?
No.
Budget?
We took out a fund balance.
We took out a fund balance. Okay, so none of these programs have changed, no. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I needed to know.
All right, all set, any additional discussion, Commissioner Getzinger?
Yeah, I have a lot of questions, primarily targeted at the service providers. Is there anybody here that can speak to that?
Director of Senior Services, thank you for being here tonight, Commissioner Getzinger.
I have a que, a lot of questions like, they talk about qualified seniors, who qualifies them? Who sets those qualifications? I wonder how many people they serve? How do they find the people that they serve? I just have a lot of questions about service providers, how they reach out to the seniors that they provide? And then, how are they held accountable for what they're doing?
Good evening, Commissioners, through the chair to you, Commissioner Getzinger. So to qualify for senior millage services, you need to be a resident of Genesee County, age 60 or older. How the process starts, for the majority of our in-home care and services that are in the home, they start by calling our intake millage line through the Valley, and a trained social worker will go through an intake process over the phone. And then if deemed, that they qualify for, let's say, in-home personal care and shore services, and/or in-home respite services, home-delivered meals, a social worker goes to the home and actually does an assessment within the home, because there's a big difference between screening over the phone and screening into the home. After that, they're deemed qualified through the Valley, which we have a contract with for case management. They are then sent to the appropriate service providers, whether that be Benson's, Family Service Agency, legal services for other in-home Michigan community services, and then they start the process with their workers within the home. In regards to monthly reimbursement, every single service provider, from G Card to in-home, has to provide monthly documentation of every single hour that's worked, every single address that's worked at, mileage, as well as reports from the case managers that have to be updated every six months. That comes to our office monthly, just as the senior centers request monthly reimbursement, and so forth and so forth each month. And all service providers go through our procurement process for an RFP that goes out every three years. Each contract through these RFPs are approved by the Commissioners for one year and eligible for renewal for up to two years after that.
Do, do any of the providers work like collaboratively with the senior centers?
Absolutely, if a senior center has a senior that cannot come to the center, or needs long care services, or needs in-home care, the senior center should reach out to the Valley, or to, that starts the process to get in-home services.
And specifically with the Genesee County Community Action, one, Item 17, they do home-delivered meals, apparently. Again, they go through the same process to determine who's eligible for those?
Correct, they go through that, and then it's passed on to G Card, and then G Card adds them as there are openings on their routes to continue services as needed until services are no longer needed.
And who follows up when they're not needed?
They would then, once they found out, let's say, a senior passes away, or go to assisted living, that driver would then notify G Card, G Card would then reach out to Valley. Valley makes the determination, yes, this person has passed away, this person has moved, we're going to close this case, we always want to double-check to make sure that that actually did happen, and it wasn't just maybe a temporary stay in the hospital. After that, case is closed, another air, another spot then opens up where they pull from the waitlist that they're ready to go, so it's ongoing. So there's always, there's always 10 to 15 seniors, let's say, in a queue, that's ready to go the next day, or the next two days, to ensure that we keep those spots filled.
And the whole elder abuse thing, they get a lot of money, how come that isn't just part of the Sheriff's Office? I mean, elder abuse, well, why don't they charge the seniors then for every, every senior who gets arrested? I mean, it seems to me like, why are we funding this when the Sheriff's Office, it seems like it's a duty of the Sheriff's Office?
It is a duty of the Sheriff's to, to protect and serve all, all people of Genesee County. This is a special task force that, or I shouldn't say task force, it's a special force that's dedicated solely to seniors aged 60 or better. They're the ones that investigate elder abuse and prevention, as well as exploitation prevention. So they're the ones going in, doing the investigation. But yes, it is a department within the Sheriff's Department.
That was a strange one to me, I guess, but, um, let's see here. As for the contract with the county and alternative elderly care in the amount for $450,000 in home personal care and homemaking, what do they do?
So if a senior is homebound, let's say, for whatever the reason, they've, they've had strokes, they've, they have dementia, they have, they're unable to drive anymore, and they're not able to get out and get, go to their, the grocery store, go to a senior center, go to doctor's appointments. Alternative elderly care for FSA, as well as Benson's, they have workers that go into the home so that a senior can get a bath a couple times, a couple times a week. They'll do housekeeping, laundry, cleaning the kitchen, changing the linens, all to ensure that a senior can stay within their home and not have to immediately move to assisted living. Because, just because a senior is homebound, doesn't mean that they need to be in assisted living. Sometimes a home-delivered meal and a few hours of in-home care can keep them in their home for, safely for years.
And then, both that group, Benson's Valley, Benson's Valley's twice, they all seem to do the same thing, is that correct?
Benson's will be a new contract service provider at alternative elderly care. Both provide in-home personal care and shore services because we have close to 300 and, actually probably closer to 400 seniors that receive this service, and not one organization can do that, but it's only one organization is assigned to a senior. So it's been, there, a senior is not receiving services from Benson's and alternative elderly care for in-home services. It's just, it's too large of a program to have one organization serve all those seniors those hours.
Do you have numbers on like, how many, the, all these groups serve?
Yes, we receive that monthly. And we meet with them every other week via Zoom to go over waiting lists as well as needs. And we also collaborate all service providers together.
I'd sure like to see some of that information.
Absolutely.
We're spending a lot of money, and it's a millage that we're responsible for, that are citizens, and it seems like we, at least I don't know anything about it, I knew, but I don't, I think this whole process has kind of caught us. My impression is, it's kind of caught our whole Board off, off-guard a little bit as to what's going on. I guess I would like to have a presentation sometime in the future about the senior centers and all the providers, and kind of just see, you know, we can bite it you know, we can bite it off in chunks or whatever, but just to kind of see what all these people do. Because it seems like there's a lot of people with their hand in the cookie jar to me. I guess, I, I'm, I have nothing else.
Thank you, Commissioner Cuzano.
Uh, Lynn, I assume, I, I, I don't really know, but all these different vendors that fill a lot of different types of requests. I'm assuming that the average senior out there that suddenly need, realizes they need help, I would assume they contact, the first contact would be what everybody knows as the senior citizen centers out there. Is that a fair guess, or do they come into the system other ways? I know I personally have helped some, but what is the average way they come in to know that some of these services are there?
Yes, many of the, I'm sorry, through the Commissioner, uh, through the chair to you, Commissioner. Yes, they can start at a senior center, they have information and referral services. They also call our office. We receive many, many phone calls all day long about where to start for services. We also, if, if we can't answer that, we know different, you know, places through the Commission on Aging that we can refer to. Also, they'll directly call the valley, they'll directly call legal services. So we all work as a team to get the, the word out that these services are available for seniors.
Okay, and how much time would be spent? Being you're the top dog, this comes your way, but educating the senior citizen centers, in particular, but all these people to coordinate that, instead of them being little silos, because I'm, and some of the things that have been said with the various vendors coming up here, I'm picking up a little siloism with some of them. And, but, my concern is just the information to the average person out there, senior, or if it's a, you know, a, a relative, you know, such in my case where I've dealt with these things, you know, to, to call. How much time, I mean, how much time is spent educating, let's say, the senior citizen centers, the directors? Educating them so that they know where all these different places are?
Well, we meet with the senior center directors and the service providers monthly, in person. That's a time for education and sharing and question and answering. Our office, wherever, our department, wherever asked, we are at health fairs with all senior millage information. So you'll have individual vendors, like legal services, Alternative Elderly Care, but you also have our office there that has everything. We have senior center information, we have senior provider information, we have how to start the process. So we're out all over the, the county, wherever we're invited. We work closely with the Commission on Aging, which is a group of about a hundred and fifty individual organizations that deal with everything senior-related. So we're out in the community, we're educating word-of-mouth, updating brochures, using social media, all those types of, of things, to get the word out.
Thank you. Commissioner Way. Commissioner Flaherty.
Um, and I heard a, a kind of a staggering number from Commissioner Wayill today that we only reach about fifteen percent, or that senior centers only do. And that would give, seeing those numbers, the service providers can't reach much more than five or ten percent. So let's say, let's say they do ten percent, and so we're reaching only twenty-five percent of our senior population. Have you ever kind of looked at other things you can do to get the word out? Like, like, I'm seventy years old, I've never, ever been asked for, to have my lawn mowed, or get meals on wheel. I've never seen anything about senior services. So, I'm assuming there must be a lot of other people that haven't, uh.
They haven't asked me either.
I probably don't qualify for my lawn, come on, man, but. But I just wonder if we're, if we're, if we're doing the, the right things to, to get more people? I mean, do you have any thoughts of, do you guys review that? Do you look at why we're only dealing with twenty-five percent of the people?
Through the chair to you. Absolutely, we, we look at that all the time. Just because you are sixty, a resident of Genesee County, sixty or older, doesn't mean you need senior millage services. So it is a concentrated group between the senior centers that serve the able-bodied in the community. You're right, that's about fifteen percent. And then you have the service providers, that gets us up to, you know, about twenty-five thousand, twenty-four thousand seniors a year. But we also have other things, information and referral. Just because a senior calls us, they might not need home-delivered meals, they just might want a recommendation for a podiatrist in the area, or a resource directory, or something like that. So they don't necessarily need a service. I know that, um, working with, with Jared, about getting more Commissioner information and millage feed, uh, information into their newsletters is going to be a focus. And again, we are always open, uh, we, I am out doing presentations, I am out in the community. My, my staff do a great job on the phone. We get phone calls for everything. Sometimes we don't even know why, but we'll, we're going to help them. So again, we just, if people want a resource directory, we'll mail it to them, we'll email it to them. We, we constantly are passing out information, even if it's not senior millage-related. We also work closely with other county departments, knowing that sometimes it's not senior-related, so let's refer this to another county department to help out. One of the, the rules in my department is, you, we never tell somebody, I'm sorry, we can't help you. There's always a number, there's always a resource, and we always give our name and number to call back if they don't hear back from a service provider, or who they need to contact.
All right, Commissioner Wayill, who defer to Commissioner Getzinger, then Commissioner Flaherty.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to our Senior Services Director. Thank you first for helping Louise, uh, who is out of Swartz Creek, and needed some, um, information and referral. And I appreciate you taking her call and, and getting her some help. So I, I agree with Commissioner Getzinger about the need for, you know, always thinking about new ways, and you agree too, to promote this. The, the conundrum, I think, is that it's my understanding, I don't know if this is true of the senior centers, but that a number of the providers, the other providers, there are seventeen of them, right? Sixteen centers, seventeen service providers, and they're really all providers, but, uh, have waiting lists. And so, the conundrum is that if there's a waiting list, and they don't have the resources to serve that new person, but we're telling the senior that that service exists, it could be very frustrating, right, to the senior, or their family member who's trying to get them in-home care, or legal services, or, you know, the other things that are on our agenda tonight. So I guess, that, that's a point I want to make, so it's a chicken and egg situation. But could you just articulate a little bit about the waiting lists as you know them? For the different services, the numbers of people that might be waiting to receive that? And, um, I'll, I'll end there, if you could just share some of those data points.
Through the chair to you. Yes, um, first off, we are always very, very open when we refer a senior to the valley to make that intake, that there are waiting lists. It's not a, you're going to call tomorrow, and three days later, you're going to have an in-home care worker in your home. There's just, there's not enough money, there's not enough time to make that happen, that turnover. But what we do try to do, and that's with the collaboration of all the service providers working together, to make sure that there are, when slots are open, there are seniors that have been assessed and are ready to go right in, you know, into that slot that opens up, for whatever the reason, death, moving, assisted living. So, yes, all of our in-home care services have waiting lists. I, I'm, off the top of my head, I know in-home personal care is over two hundred. Law, and I guess this goes within the home, not, but lawn care has over two hundred and fifty. We're at about eighty for home-delivered meals. Respite, I want to say, is twenty to thirty, maybe a little bit higher. And, what, am I, am I missing one, off the top of my head? I think those are the ones with, with the main waiting lists, that are the most popular services.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Flaherty.
Good evening, Lynn. Do you, Mr. Chair? This is probably a better question for number thirty-four, but since I have you up here, I'm going to ask. So with this new task force that's being, that's being set up, are they going to examine the services provided by the county, the centers, service providers? You know, as, as a, an average resident would probably look at this agenda, similar to what Commissioner Getzinger said, and kind of what Mr. Cuzano said. They could potentially see a lot of redundancies just in the descriptors that's, that are in the agenda. And if you look at this, really the only two that stand out to me as mutually exclusive are the transportation piece and the property maintenance piece. Is that something that's going to be examined? Because like you just said, there's very long waiting lists for these services. And we've had a lot of service providers asking for additional funding. Is that all going to be a piece of that? Because if you've got two hundred people waiting to get their driveway plowed, or their, their lawn mowed, you know, that could potentially create additional hazards for them. Rodents, slip and falls, all, all that kind of stuff. So is that something that's going to be looked at on the whole, as far as what funding is needed for those providers? Or, like you said, you've got two providers doing in-home care because they can't handle the volume. Is there another one out there?
Through the chair to you. I honestly, I cannot speak on the task force. I don't know what the goals are, I don't know what's going to be looked at. I know that I have worked closely, when I came into this role with an advisory committee, and it worked well until it didn't. So whatever the board would like, would like me to do, to assist in, to, to, to do, I, I certainly will do that. And we are very well aware of the importance of getting down the waitlist. The problem is, there's not enough money to do that. And that's where the balancing act is very, is very difficult. And it, it's very unfortunate that this budget season has turned into this. It's not been fun for anybody. So, but I assure you that we are looking at the numbers, and we are making, I am making the best recommendation to you based on a sound budget. I wish we could take everybody off that waitlist, it's just not possible. And I wish there wasn't such a need, but that also goes back to the power of the millage, of how much the senior millage. Because I guarantee you, those twenty-five thousand seniors that are receiving services probably think this is one of the best things that could ever happen to them.
Sure, and again, if I may, Mr. Chair, that may be a better question for the Commissioners that are establishing a task force. But in government, you know, we often don't look at, how do we eliminate redundancies and have, you know, multi-tools of agencies or departments or services that provide multiple services? Just, I, I did have a couple people call me, residents of mine, and ask, you know, about the in-home care. Why is there two? Why is there multiple legal services offered? But there's one company to get them from place to place, one company to help them maintain it.
And if I, if I may, through the chair to you, again, for all of our service providers, we do put this out through, for RFP. So county-wide, we can, you know, we, we can take, in fact, we, we want multiple providers to provide the same service, because then we have the possibility to, to branch out. For example, partnering with Benson's for respite care, because they're a larger organization, we can actually serve more clients, more hours, with the same amount of money. And those are the type of things that we're looking at.
Because I know Benson's is very large, but to have that secondary piece in there was, was kind of odd, but you explained it well, so, thank you.
Commissioner Cuzano.
Just would comment in, in general about finances and, and money. You know, I've been doing this for a lot of years, and, uh, every decision we make, it's, it's really about money, and I've never seen too much money. You know, there's, whatever the service is, and whatever the, the need is, you know, we never have enough. And, uh, so that's why we get paid the big bucks, to make those decisions. And, and, and some of them like this, it's, it's heart-wrenching, it really is, it's, it's tough decisions. But, uh, I just wanted to make that general observation, it doesn't matter what topic you're doing, there's never enough money. I mean, whatever department comes in, our departments are good, and they, they know we're under financial constraints. They never really ask for too much, but I know whatever they're asking, they want more. And, I mean, that's just human nature, and, uh, and we're elected to make those decisions. Just a general observation, that's all.
Commissioner Getzinger.
Um, are there, are there, um, some of these provided, providers, that that service could be put on the senior centers? Because I understand the centers probably do some of this, due to, like you said, waiting lists and such. So it, or, or are they not looked at to do this because they don't bid for any of this stuff?
Through the chair to you. No, the senior centers do not provide the in-home services. They provide services to the able-bodied that are able to come to their center for a congregate meal. The service providers provide services to seniors that aren't able to come to centers. Now, what I would love to see is a more expanded role for the senior centers and their transportation programs. I would love to see them be able to, to pick up some of that, because it is, it is very much needed. I don't ever want to say, there's not a, technically a wait list for rides, but there are denied, a denied list, because there's, of the four vehicles, they're not available. So one of the areas that the senior centers could provide is expanding their role with their own transportation program. Of course, that's through their boards, that's through their governing body, but that is a way that they could, they could expand. They have congregate meals for the seniors in their centers. G Card has home-delivered meals for the homebound. So they're really, they're two separate tracks. What both organizations al, also can do is information and referral. So tho, that's a way that they can, they can partner. But also, on the other side of it, yes, if a senior center felt that they could do a lawn care program, they have more than the opportunity to apply for that, any of the RFPs, if they wanted to branch out. But for the most part, they would deal with the sen, the seniors that come to them. The service providers go to the senior at the home.
All right, any additional discussion? Okay, sing non, all in favor on items one through thirty-two, under the Human Services Committee agenda indicated by saying aye, if you're in favor.
Aye.
All right, all opposed, nay? All right, the motion passes. Thank you, Lynn, and thank you for the board for a robust discussion.
Hey, uh, I move a resolution, twenty-two-five, two-one-oh-seven, approval of two grant awards from the Health Resources and Services Administration in the amount of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand, four-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars, and three-hundred-and-five-thousand, seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars, to provide for Genesee County's Healthy Start Initiative.
All right, supported by Commissioner Cuzano, any discussion? Commissioner Flah, uh, Getzinger.
Yeah, could you just tell me what the county's Healthy Start Initiative is?
Brad from the Health Department, thanks for coming up.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Healthy Start Program is a maternal-child health initiative aimed to improve birth outcomes for expected mothers and, and those who have given birth in Genesee County.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, sing non, all in favor, any capable saying aye, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes.
Okay, I move a resolution, twenty-two-five, two-two-two-four, approval of a request to create the Genesee County Senior Services Advisory Task Force.
Support.
All right, supported by Commissioner Avery. Any discussion? Commissioner Getzinger.
Who, who is this task force going to report to?
Uh, the task force will report to the total board. And, and, uh, in response to Commissioner Flaherty's question, the task force is to do what we don't have time to do. And that is to take a deep dive into the existing model of senior services, and come back to the board with recommendations.
And, and is it reasonable for us to expect maybe like quarterly reports? Or, or is the expectation they go and do their thing and come back and, at the end, or what's the thought on that?
The life of the task force, and correct me if I'm wrong, is through, is it June twenty-sixth?
So, if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I'm not seeing the second half of this in our packet. So the, the first part's on here, but the actual, what I wrote, the full piece of what I wrote, I can't find. So, my- So my, it's in the full packet. So my vision for this was that it could last for up to a year. And that it would give us, and we could, we could ask for a preliminary report, so, you know, several months in if you wanted to. But that it would be these nine independent folks, one for each of us to a point. They would be responsible to this full body as a group. They would spend up to a year studying this. I think their first report, technically by what I wrote, is due by June the first. And it would be data, information that they've discovered, but also a set of non-binding recommendations, so we wouldn't have to follow it. But again, it's a deep dive into all these issues about services that are provided, that, and that, where the value is. Services that may not be provided yet, but could be potentially, that seniors want. You know, twenty-five percent of the senior population is using the senior millage or a service provided by that. Are there things that we're not offering? The process by which we distribute the money and determine how much is going to the different providers? All of that would be subject to their taking a look at. And I think that gets at what Commissioner Flewell was saying earlier. But to your question, the first report, I think, is June one, that they give us, a written report. But then I've also indicated that they're supposed to come before us, after June the first, to present that report and their non-binding recommendations. And then, of course, we would do all sorts of questions and answers at that time. The reason I timed it the way I did is that it falls during budget season next year, so that we can get ahead of it and at least have the same set of facts where we can make good decisions. I hope that helps.
One more, when's the expectation that it will begin?
That's a good question. I would say...
Yeah, we're approving it tonight, so...
Yeah, I would say immediately. And then, you know, the other thing I put in here was so that we could attempt to avoid, as best we can, conflicts of interest. I did indicate in my backup document that the members of this group, none of them can be an employee of one of the providers. That includes the senior centers and all the others. And none of them can be a volunteer board member for either the nonprofit providers or the senior centers. And none of them can be a vendor who supplies goods and services to any of those thirty-some organizations, because they have a monetary interest there. So I attempted to do that, to make it clean. And hopefully, it's just gonna be some great people with good minds who can ask great questions and come back to us. So I, I think at some point, we can say, maybe they come back at the, in January, after they formed, and let us know what's going on. But I would say immediately, so think about who you want to appoint. Mr. Freeman, have you thought about? So I also put in there that instead of senior services providing staff support, because that could be considered a conflict, I put in there that a member of the, a member or members of the staff of the Genesee County Metropolitan Planning Commission, Eric's area, would provide staff support. But maybe Josh, you can talk about how you foresee us getting you the names and how that'll work?
One point of information before you answer that, Josh, if I may. Did you also, is there also a piece in there where each commissioner appoints somebody from their district?
So each commissioner gets to appoint. It doesn't say they have to be from that commissioner's district, but certainly they can be.
So, just wanted to say that. So, and so, Mr. Freeman, when you answer this question, speak to how those names would come, like what does that look like?
Yeah, so I mean, essentially, the speed with which it starts is dependent on you guys. The sooner you get me names with, of who you want to appoint each person, we can get, get the ball rolling as soon as we have a quorum, you know, as soon as we have at least five members. But I would, I would hope that all of you could get those names to me maybe within a couple of weeks. And then they can kick off at the beginning of October.
So I, if I might, I, did you just send this to me?
Brian did.
Oh, Brian did. So it does say near the bottom, "The task force shall begin its work no later than October fifteenth, twenty-twenty-five." And I think, you know, that gives us a little over a month. And send the names to Mr. Freeman and we will, we'll get him started.
Okay, so I have Commissioner Shoemaker, Commissioner Kuzino, then Commissioner Winfrey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Wayhill, thank you for all the work. There's a few things that I did have questions on that you've addressed. I'm very concerned with this, and that's why I'm glad you brought up that it's not gonna be handled by senior services. But I also have seen boards put together here that get steered by other departments and there's a vested interest or somebody's got their own agenda from that side. So obviously, the board will have to come together, they'll have to have some formal structure that we will, I'm sure, help with from that standpoint. I, I'm just wondering, so I can understand what I'm gonna ask of this resident? Is it gonna be a regular meeting? Did I miss this monthly? Or is it as the board decides, or?
They would decide their meeting sequence, although I did put the parameter that they shall meet at least once a month and will hold their meetings in a location open to the public. So I did put that stipulation in here. I would think that they would, you know, at their first meeting, decide whether they need to meet maybe more frequently at the outset. But it does say at least once a month. I imagine they would meet in this building so that people can have access to their discussions. You know, and I, I would love for them, I didn't get into that level of detail, but I think they should allow public comment, probably. I think they should have what I would call public hearings, where they can listen to people, ask questions, et cetera.
If I may continue.
Yes.
That's just some of my concerns, what their structures. We're, we're gonna need to obviously provide staff, so there's obviously a cost to doing that. You know, have we thought of, is it coming out of the senior millage, these funds, to provide some staff to help with? Or is it just coming out of the general fund, which is fine, because it's, it's that important and I think we can fund it from general, the general fund. It's not gonna be a ton of money, it's just enough that those are things we need to look at. But they are gonna need resources, they are gonna need somebody to do research for them. Now, obviously, they could do some of their own, but they are gonna need some of that. So I don't, and maybe we let them get into it and tell us what they need and see if we're willing to provide it, if, if they need someone to provide more staffing or whatever. It's just, it's, it's a great thing, like I said, I, I just want to make sure we have, if we're asking to meet middle of October, that we have kind of all the wrinkles knocked out.
So as to the resources, I'll admit that I didn't think about exactly where dollars would flow from in terms of what budget. But I did say, in addition to saying that a member, a staff member of the planning commission would support them, I said, other resources necessary for them to accomplish their work, they could come to us with requests for those. One of the things that Dr. Brown has said, I think she said it last week, I don't, it may have gotten lost in all the discussion, but she's interested in engaging with U of M Flint potentially and/or Michigan State School of Public Medicine to see if there's graduate students or even faculty that might help with some of the data gathering for this group on a pro bono basis. So I know that she's interested in exploring that angle and finding out if there's capacity there. And I did say in this also that anytime they have extra, need extra resources that are monetary, we would have to approve that through a majority vote, this board.
Commissioner Kuzino, are you all?
I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Couple of things, first of all, you know, I don't have an answer for this, but moving forward, we're gonna need to keep politics out of it. You know, I am deeply concerned about that. But I, I am, I, I guess I would like to see some type of feedback or report or meeting before June something, at least once they get themselves up and organized that, you know, maybe in sixty days or something, come and report to us just how they've organized. You know, because June, they should be up and running pretty dang strong, but I think that maybe we should have, and this is coming from a guy that hates long meetings, but, you know, I think we should have a report from them before that June something.
I wonder without, if there's no objection, we could just add a sixty-day preliminary report from the members of the group, that they come to one of our regular meetings or to one of Chairman Winfrey's health, human service meetings, within sixty days of the formation? Is that?
Sixty days of October, whatever that date was.
Sixty days from October the fifteenth? Can we, do I need to make a motion on that, or would you?
Um, I, I think if there's no objection, we just make the friendly amendment.
So within sixty days of October fifteenth, the official start date?
There's no objection to what he just suggested?
Yes.
So we just make, make the amendment? The other thing I suggest is, maybe we should add to the makeup of the commission, representative from University of Michigan, representative from U of, okay, all right. Okay, all right, thank you.
I think the resources, I think as soon as we start adding more members, I think it becomes more complicated.
Okay.
And it could be more political than we would want it to be. I tried to make it as clean as I could. It started out a little different and I took feedback from Commissioner Winfrey, Commissioner Brown. You know, and I, I massaged it to where it is today.
Okay, no, thank you, I appreciate that. I was just thinking about what you raised, that Dr. Brown mentioned, and how can we...
I think the technical assistance providers, essentially. It may be more than them on other areas, you know, so...
And then back to the amendment about the, them coming in the period that you just mentioned, should we have them come, like, a quarterly basis too? Because I, because to what Commissioner Flewell mentioned, I mean, Getzinger mentioned, I wouldn't want them to, like, come report to us at the onset. And then, I hear you over there, Commissioner Flewell. And he always teases me, is about mixing names up up here. I'm getting old, I'm forty. Right. But, but seriously, I was thinking about, if they're coming to us on the onset, do we, we don't want them to wait to come at the end and then say, here's the report. You know, they may bring us something, we may want them to kind of...
My thought, if I might, would be that you establish the sixty days, October the fifteenth. Hopefully, they'll all be here. They, they should have a chair by then, which they are gonna select by a majority vote. I think at that point, we hear what they have to say, and then I think we ask them to come back and we set a, another date. I don't know that we have to do it tonight, in other words.
Sure, understood.
I think, let's see what, what's going on with them. And I'm totally open to regular check-ins. But I think we can let them know then.
Sure. Great job again, you, our Chair of Human Services, Commissioner Winfrey, Dr. Brown, others, for, for this, I think is great. Commissioner Getzinger.
One other question. You talked about having like public comment, having their meetings open to the public. That, to me, opens the door for a lot of shenanigans of people trying to muscle their way into, whether they're a provider or a senior center or whatever, doesn't matter. And, and to me, I could see having more like, again, like a quarterly public hearing. They'd let them work where they don't have to be careful or worry about somebody sitting in the audience or getting bombarded by twenty people every meeting that want them to do their services.
The only thing that's in here is that they have to meet in public. It doesn't say anything, I mean, I said that I envision them potentially, but it doesn't require it. They can decide their own sort of rules. The only stipulation is that they be transparent about their meetings. To me, that serves a public purpose and it serves a purpose of transparency. They obviously would have to collect data and information from all the service providers and many others. They'll, they'll have to decide the format by which they do that. So I was just saying, they could have a public hearing if they wish to do so. Or a public comment if they wish to do so. But it's not required under this.
I think our attorney is smiling.
I'm smiling at something else.
No, I, I was just wondering, would it be subject to the Open Meetings Act? Where we would, where it would be required, you know, for public comments?
That's a tricky question. The law suggests and states that boards that are purely advisory are not subject to the Open Meetings Act. And so, it would be my, my recommendation would be to not create a body that's subject to the Open Meetings Act, because that just creates more rules and regulations that this board ultimately would have, would have to be responsible for, liable for.
Yes, and the language does says Advisory Task Force.
Right.
All right, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, any capable saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Is there a report from Human Services, Mr. Chair?
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you. Public Works Committee, Commissioner Brian Flewell and Vice Chair, Commissioner James Avery.
Due to circumstances beyond my control, I couldn't be here last week, so I'll turn it over to Commissioner Avery.
Sure. I'd like to move Resolution twenty-two-five-twenty-ninety, approval of request by Genesee County's Drain Commissioner to sell parcels six-nineteen-three-hundred-zero-two-two to Fenton Township.
Support.
All right, move by Commissioner Avery, supported by Commissioner Flewell. Any discussion? Seeing none, Commissioner Kuzino.
Excuse me, just, where is this parcel at?
I have my computer in front of me.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Flewell.
Through you to Commissioner Kuzino, I did look it up, it's, it's, it's right there. I don't think it's been invited yet, but it's with the sewage treatment plant down in Fenton Township. They're looking to get access to the Shireathie River for the township.
Okay, I remember the discussion now, thank you.
All right, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? All right, motion passes. Any report from Public Works Committee?
Yes, sir.
All right, if there's no additional, any additional comments or...
Mr. Chair, just a notice, we were notified today by our architect that our building won an award from the American Institute of Architects for adaptive reuse. And if you'd like, I can read it just real quickly here, that ultimately, they chose Genesee County for the sheer breadth of the reuse work done, the striking differences within the interior and its honoring of the bank's history. Most notable throughout the interior, though, was the impressive use of natural light. And we really enjoyed that the design team put a lot of focus towards ensuring natural light would penetrate as deeply into the core as possible. So we've got a nice building here and we're winning awards for it, it's pretty cool.
Congratulations.
It's pretty awesome. Any, any other comments? Kudos to all those that worked on the project, again, staff, and then also to architects, design teams, engineers, subcontractors, general contractors, who helped make this project a reality. And then to this board and past previous boards. And of course, Commissioner B.B. Noden, who we named this auditorium after. All right, any additional comments? All right, seeing none, this meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-six P.M.